I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, let me see. Not a lot going on. COSBRA has decided to join the Consortium of State School Boards Association. It's either C-O-S-S-B-R-A, COSBRA, not quite sure. And we're the 24 states to do it. All our neighbors are in it already, Michigan, Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, so they've decided to join that.
So is that sort of, you know, that national debacle?
I think so. I think that's what is fueling this. It didn't say that, but, you know, past history. There is a new board member gathering like we had last year. We probably want to have our new board members go to that. It's in Green Bay. On, let's see, when was that?
April 18th.
April 18th. There's no cost. You don't need to register. You just show up. So you probably should approach them to do that. Chris, you found it quite beneficial when you went, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
A lot, being a brand-new board member.
Yep, okay. There's two crime bills that have passed the Assembly. Assembly Bill 53 would require public schools and private schools to collect stats on violations of municipal disorderly conduct ordinances and certain crimes, including homicide, sexual assault, burglary, battery, arson that occur on school property. It has to occur, they must collect it if it occurs on a weekday between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and if it's reported to law enforcement, and if a charge is filed. So there's criteria where you've got to report that. And then you have to report it to the DPI, which then could affect your report card.
Hmm.
The problem is, as we all love them, it would be unfunded mandate, and then, you know, the paperwork, the people that it takes to gather all that information, to, you know, send it down to the DPI. So that's the struggle right now they have with that. The author of the bill says it's a parent transparency bill. That's what he, she calls it, a parent transparency bill designed to let parents know what's happening in their schools. So if, you know, if there's a high rate of incidences in one school, those parents, they feel those parents should be, know that so that they could maybe school choice to a different school. And then there's Assembly Bill 69. It's also about law enforcement, reporting law enforcement, to law enforcement, certain crimes and other incidences that occur on the school grounds. This one's a little bit different. It provides that if there's 100 or more incidences that occur in a school semester, and at least 25 of those incidences result in arrest, then the school must know later than the first day of the next school year, employ or contract for an SRO at school. But, are we struggling with that? And then they define what certain crimes are. They'd be like disorderly conduct, homicide, sexual assault, burglary, battery, arson, things like that. But it does not include tobacco use, cigarettes, nicotine vaping. So they kind of take that out of the picture because that's not the crimes if they're...
Right.
Yeah. So we'll see where that ends up. Like I said, it passed the Assembly, so we'll see how it goes in the Senate. And then, of course, Governor Evers sent out his bill, his, not his bill, but his budget. And so I'm sure that'll be picked apart. So who knows how that ends up, but we do know the state has money, so we'll see how that, how that turns out.
Questions?
Right.
All right, we'll keep going. Board CISA report, Mick.
Oh, a little short. We are offering business services and payroll services to districts, you know, smaller districts that need it. I'm hoping that still goes because we are right now looking for a new business manager ourselves, so that might be a little bit delayed, but it is out there and it's going to be offered. The date of the capital is coming, or has it, I'm not sure what the date is, or has it already gone past?
I think it's this week.
This week, okay. They want to remember that. Again, the new board member meeting is at the CISA building in Green Bay on April 18th. And we have two board members that are on the WAASB board, and they are hoping that we have a new director by the third week of April, because John Asher retired, so.
Right, yeah.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Any questions for Mick? All right, we'll keep going.
Oh, one more thing. Just one more thing. You know, I encourage someone on this board to take that spot. It was a really big learning experience for me. It's a great board. We have gone through a little bit of adjustment with the new administration, the new administrator, but Colleen has got us on a really good path, I think, in really getting down to basics and what districts need. So it would be a two-year commitment right now because the person doesn't run, the school district runs, so we have a three-year term. So I just finished, this will be my last, first year of this three-year term, so I really encourage someone to, on this board and sitting here or new coming in, to, you know, really think about it. Really think about it. So, that's it.
Do you feel like there's ice on you?
It's once a month, you know, it's once a month, the second Wednesday of the month.
Well, and it's, it's actually, it's the board of CISA, and it allows AlGoma to have a voice on the, on the board. So that's in, and to stay in tune with what's going on.
It's not going to say step a voice, you know. So I would encourage someone to, I mean, to try and step up and take care of that. Okay, I'm done.
All right. Now, Max, you're up.
Last Sunday, or Sunday two days ago was, I thought that was a really successful event. I thought, the theme was mask grade, and I thought that was implemented well. I thought, I saw a lot of people wearing the masks, and I thought the decorations were good. I wasn't helping with them, but I thought they did a good job. Yeah, I think overall it was a good night. And then, spring sports is continuing, going on. And then, this following week, or in three days, a lot of the high schoolers leave to go on the New York trip, band trip. So, yeah, a lot of the high schoolers are going on that, so it's a good way to spend spring break, and I'm excited I'm going on it too.
Yeah, it sounds like a wonderful trip coming up. Questions for Max? All right, we'll keep going. I don't have any misconceptions or rumors, and we did not see that anybody signed up to speak, so I'll go right into board president announcements. It is pretty remarkable to have a board that has this much experience on it. And we're, you know, we're going to be going into a number of years now where we're going to be having a lot, you know, newer members. But the time and energy and effort that the two that are leaving today, both Dave Wessel, who, this is what, your 43rd year, and Mick, who this would be your 21st...
21.
21st year.
21, yeah.
That's a lot, a lot of time and effort, and they have been active members and such have given so much to this district, and we are going to miss them. It's always good to get new blood in, and so, you know, change can be good, but it does not diminish at all the amount of effort and the appreciation we have for what you have done, Smick and Dave. I don't know that anybody will ever reach your record, 43 years. It's incredible, and your wisdom and your experience has been valuable all these years. So we do have a little cake to celebrate, and at 6:30 we'll have like a five-minute recess and cut some cake. Anybody that wants a piece that's here can have a piece of cake. We'll just have a short little recess for that. But, yeah, I've been proud to serve with both of you.
I'd like to give her a big hand.
Yes.
It's been really rewarding to be able to serve this district, you know, and accomplishing what we have accomplished. And I think back to the administrators we've had, and, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is renovating the auditorium. I mean, it didn't always look like that. That was huge. That was huge. You know, then they brought in other administrators that, you know, put us on the global map, put us on the national map. And now we brought in Jesse, who boots-to-the-ground running, and he's just, you know, just building on what we already have. So it's really been nice to have been part of that, very proud to be part of that, you know. I always say it's easy to be on a board when you have good administration. So whoever's coming in should have an easy job.
Dave, would you like to say something?
Well, it's been a long, long time, folks. I'll miss you all, but it's always 5:00 o'clock somewhere. You guys don't know what it is. When I got on the board, I had an ambition for three things. Number one, I'm on the board for children. Number two, for the teachers. Number three, for taxpayers. You have to balance that out. It's like walking a teeter totter. You've got to be fair to everybody, and I worked at trying to do that, and I guess nobody wanted to push me out, otherwise I probably wouldn't have been out the first three years. I'm proud to know a lot of people that I met on this job. Made a lot of friends, went to a lot of places, and I was traveling in my job besides, and I could always go in a district and say, you know this person, or you know that person? Because I met so many people who were on my regular employment and through the school board. I totally enjoyed it, and I'll miss, miss you all, okay?
It is bittersweet. It is very bittersweet.
And like I said, Barb, it's 5:00 o'clock somewhere.
Well, you can always come and sit.
I can always go sit on that side.
Yeah, you can. Enjoy the meetings from there.
You know, when I think back, it was Eric Nelson that encouraged me to run for school board.
Wow. Yeah. Well, and he's still with the district.
And he's still with the district.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you again. We will move on, and we'll have a little cake at 6:30. Administration reports, starting with you, Jesse.
All right. I want to go through our monthly budget and just talk a little bit this month about our mill rate. And so, kind of explaining what the mill rate is. Three key takeaways we'll have tonight is understanding how the mill rate is established, learn about the historic path we've taken with our mill rate here in the district, and also then see where we're at currently with our budget, so. So a mill rate isn't a term that maybe a lot of our taxpayers know about, or even our staff probably, but the mill rate is really the property tax dollars that are levied per $100,000 of equalized property value. And so, the mill rate really fluctuates year after year. We try to keep it stable, but as property values increase or decrease, that causes us to look at our mill rate that we look at every year, trying to maintain it, so. Like I said, one of the things we've, and AlGoma is trying to make sure that tax rate is flat for our taxpayers, so they know exactly how much we're going to be levying based off of their property value. So you'll see that in the next couple slides here, so. How the mill rate's calculated is the total school levy, so that we look at for our taxpayers, and we divide that by the equalized property value, and then take that by 1,000, and that creates our mill rate. So you can see the numbers that we had for this year, and we came out at $7.40 for our mill rate. That mill rate then is assessed at each hundred, or at each $1,000 of someone's property value then, so. Try to keep that stable from year to year. You'll see here on the next slide our history with our mill rate the last couple of years. So back in 1718, we were at about just over $9. We dropped below $9 in 1819, then went down to 884 in 1920, 870 in 2021, 867 in 2122. And this year, we dropped down to $7.40 for the 2223 school year. In working with our finance consultants, we thought it was, $7.40 was a good number to come in at for our mill rate based off of the increased property value evaluations that came in this year, which ranged anywhere from 13% to 19% in our district, depending on what township or if you live in the city, so. So you can see this graph shows where AlGoma is in comparison to districts around us. So we are right in the middle with our $7.40 mill rate. I know it's hard to read some of the districts on the bottom, but you can see all of them are under $10 right now. This slide I put together today, I did some math, and I think it's really important for our taxpayers to really understand this slide. So in 2122, for a $100,000 household, they paid $867 per $1,000, or in total. So every $1,000, they paid $8.67, which came to $867. You can see the same, I did it for a $200,000 household, it was about $1,734 they paid that went to school property or school taxes. In 2223, I took a 15% property value increase, so a $100,000 house is now a $115,000 house, and we, the $7.40 mill rate that we have, our taxpayers paid $851 in taxes. And for a $200,000 house, that property value went up to $230,000, and they paid $1,702 at the $7.40 mill rate. So you can see taxes actually went down for our taxpayers based off our mill rate, even though their property values increased, so.
Yeah, it's a hard concept for people. I mean, the taxes went up for a lot of people in AlGoma, but it wasn't the schools.
So, any questions so far about the mill rate? All right. I thought this would be a fun way to look back at some history. So in 1984, about the time that Dave was coming onto the board, our mill rate was at $12.95, and we had 741 students. In fall of 20, or 2002, when Mick was coming onto the board, we had a mill rate of $10.53, and our enrollment was about 657 for our membership count. Look back to this last fall, our mill rate's $7.40, and our membership is back up to 722, so.
That's your starting point, Chris. Yeah, that's interesting.
So, and I've heard stories from board members back in the day when that mill rate was very low, and how difficult it was for the district to just operate by basic supplies such as pencil, paper, notebooks for our students. So it's really important that we maintain that mill rate as stable as possible without looking at tax increases when not necessary. All right, I want to get into our budget summary. So in front of you is our monthly summary from, it was printed this morning. This is the same report that we went over last month for the first time. So again, remember that the Es are for expenditures and the Rs are for revenue, money we've taken in. When you're looking at the Rs, negative numbers, mean positive, because it's money that we've taken in, so. So far, in our Fund 10, our general operating fund, we have collected about 54% of our total expected revenue, and we've spent about 46 of our projected expenditures so far. We are on track. For Fund 27, our special education, we've collected about 21% of our expected revenue, but we've spent about 56%. So we have a couple things that come in later in the year in terms of special education, as far as state and federal aid, so we're expecting those to be arriving here in the next couple months before we close out the budget on, in end of June. Fund 50, which is our food service, we've collected 52% of our total revenue and have spent about 62% of our expenditures. And that number for revenue will continue to go up as we continue to collect more in lunch costs from our students, obviously, these for lunches, so. And then the last one is our Fund 80, or community service. You see, we've collected almost all of our expected revenues at 92%, and we have spent about 64 of our projected expenditures. Feel like we are in a very good place with our budget for this year at this point. Working closely with Baird, they see that we are doing well so far as comparing ours to other years, so.
And when, when, are the escrow funds, because that plays into...
Correct. So escrow funds need to be spent by fall of '24.
Questions for Jesse on that? Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll jump into our, where we're at with our facility study, because that is well underway here. We've been meeting with McKinstry and Phelan Builders. I had a meeting with them last Friday. They had representatives come out last week and did a thorough walkthrough of all of our buildings to look at our heating HVAC system, our classrooms, restrooms, any facilities, components that they needed to look at, but they're going to come back and write a report. So our next step is to have a meeting on April 17th with a planning committee, looking for two board members to be part of that. We're going to meet from 3:15 to 5:30. Myself, administration, and a teacher from each of our buildings will be represented as well. The purpose of this meeting is going to be to really look at all options on the table and consider which ones are priority for the district, so. Start prioritizing, so. Our hope is to have the final study wrapped up by the end of June with a board presentation at the July 24th, the final report, so. Any questions about where we're at with the facility study?
That was a 17, 3:15 to...
5:30.
Any volunteers?
If we search Barb, and she was interested, and I've talked a little bit with Chris, you may be a little late, but you might be able to make it.
We got it covered. Good, okay.
Okay.
A lot more discussion will happen once we finish some of these initial meetings.
Right.
And look at some of the results of the facility study, because obviously, there's going to be needs, and then there's going to be maybe the wants, so that's, you know, and I think the wants are going to be where we're going to, that's what's more open-ended and want to get a lot of input from a lot of different places.
And the last thing I have to speak about is our cash defeesance option. And I have Kevin Mullen here from Baird to present to us about an option that was brought to me as a, something to consider, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mullen.
Well, thank you. So I have two goals with this presentation. First is to talk about the defeesance. It's later in your agenda and how that fits into your last year's budget and your planning for the future. And the other goal is to try to stretch this out until 6:30, so I can have some paper.
You're welcome to just enjoy the meeting.
So the last two years, as Jesse had described, your tax rate and your tax levy, the board has taken the initiative to maintain your debt service at a certain level, to keep your tax rate in a range, and using your Fund 39 debt. Fund 39 debt is the debt that is approved through referendum, and it's the one place in your budget that you actually have a little bit of latitude in terms of managing your tax rate. So you, you have a minimum amount each year that you can levy, but the board prepaid, levied extra last year in 2021, '22, and in 2022, '23, with the expectation that it helps you stabilize your tax rate and then allows you the opportunity to prepay debt. So the defeesance that you're considering today in the budget was anticipated in your last two budget processes as a way to maintain your debt service. And so what we did was we actually have finalized that defeesance, and that's what's reflected in the resolution in front of you later on tonight. And that defeesance prepays a large portion of your 2016 borrowing. So the amount of money that you have that is accumulated in Fund 39 that can be used for the defeesance or that prepayment is roughly $1 million. That is excluding the amount that you're going to make for your normal debt service payments this year still, and that you levied for your normal debt service payments last year. What that money is used for is it goes into an escrow. That escrow is held in trust by a trustee, and they make those debt service payments on your behalf. So once the defeesance is approved, that levy, that defeesance comes off your books, and that debt is no longer the debt of the school district, it's the debt of the trust. And so it literally is off your books. And so that was always the intent. We anticipated using two levies in one year to reduce the fixed costs. The total fixed costs of this transaction are roughly $12,000, and that represents the cost of a legal opinion, the resolutions, plus an opinion that it's completely off your books, paying a trustee to babysit those funds between now and the call date when those bonds are called in 2024. You have to pay for verification to make sure that the investments that are in those funds are sufficient to pay bondholders, so that it's not your responsibility, it's someone else's, and then the consulting fee for putting all of those pieces together. So all of those pieces are included in that cost. The net savings to the district after the levy and costs would be a savings of $184,000, $185,000. I think in your estimate, it was $183, but once, you know, things were finalized, that final is at roughly $185,000, just above that. The total amount of cost that's off the books as a result of that is $1,292, but as I mentioned, a portion of that is levy that you've made. You know, those are taxes that you've collected for this purpose, so the net amount is $185,000 of savings. Additionally, if the defeesance is done in this calendar year, our fiscal year for the school year, it runs through the aid formula, and it then generates additional aid or all of that aid you'll receive next year. So $255,000 is the estimate based on what your equalization aid amount was last year. Probably will be slightly more than that once, you know, the dust settles on the state budget, but that additional aid will be received in next year's school budget. So you'll have reduced your debt service payments. If you look at the schedule that was included in your board packet, you'll notice that there is a column that shows your debt service before the defeesance and a column that shows your debt service after the defeesance, and the net amount is the difference of the two. That net amount is the amount of reduction in your payments moving forward. You'll also notice on the very right-hand side of that sheet, it shows what's remaining in your Fund 39 debt service for future payments. You have four payments left on your existing debt, $250,000 plus interest on the 2016 borrowing, plus some payments on a QZAB loan. You could, if you decide next year, in next year, in October for next year's budget, to do one more defeesance, you know, to kind of maintain your debt service at a relatively flat level, that would prepay all of your debt, with the idea being as you start to consider the facility's needs next year, that payment would, on a new project, would follow in behind that hole that's been created as a result of this defeesance. So, you know, I feel like it also represents really good fiscal planning. So I know that's a lot of information, and I didn't quite get to 6:30, but certainly I'd answer any questions you might have.
So what is the total amount that, because I think the dollar amount in our packet was 1,107.91.
Sure. Forgive me for looking at my phone, I've got...
No, so in terms of what we're going to be approving later or considering to approve later?
Sure. The deposit to the escrow total uses is 1,107. And 1,000,000... And one million zero ninety-four is the amount that would be going into the actual escrow.
Okay, so then the.
The final, the resolutions that you have.
This is correct, okay.
So, you know, I think it really dovetails really nicely into Jessie's presentation earlier. You really can, you can see how you, you know, managed your levy. And I think you really, it was thoughtful to include that change in value slide to show what taxes paid were year over year, because obviously, that's what taxpayers care about, you know.
Sure, and, and what's so misunderstood.
Absolutely. It's often that you would have representative from a municipality here that would not have that same, you know, understanding, so. Great.
Yeah, this, the sheet that you had given us was very helpful. Yeah, so, yeah, it pretty much answered my questions. And we did discuss the, the cash defeesence at our finance committee meeting, which we'll talk about later. Any questions?
I just, when you think about the monies involved, you can, you look at the, you know, that's a savings to the district of like four hundred and forty thousand dollars. When you think about what we're saving interest and what we would get in, in, in aid, but, you know, why wouldn't we do this?
Yes, and it also sets us up nicely for, for our future plans and needs.
Because we can make, we can have all those plans and do what, you know, what, what needs to be done without raising the mill rate, which is, you know, our goal.
And one thing, and I applaud you for, you know, having such foresight, because you really, you know, you're about eighteen months away from that cycle completing. But one thing to keep in mind is, you know, at the end of that, if nothing, you know, if you were to push it off by a year, your tax rate would drop all the way, because, you know, that's where that hole in debt service is, and then likely come back up. And so that's just something to be aware of, you know. You've been very thoughtful in that planning, and it's, that's kind of the natural progression as you consider what your needs are.
Thank you. I would say you've burned cake.
Any other questions before we move on? All right, I think we're good.
Thank you. For your attention.
Yeah, thank you. We'll move on to elementary principals' report.
Katie. All right. First, we just wanted to share some merch Bright Spots. We have collaborated with the PTS. They are currently running the PTS merch into no sale madness calendar fundraiser. It'll go till the end of the month, so the thirty-first, and all proceeds of that fundraiser will go to purchase a Gagadet for the elementary school for the playground. Like I said, fundraisers will, will wrap up on Friday, but there's still time after spring break to turn in those calendars if anyone is participating in that. We celebrated Read Across America Week during the first week of the month in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday, so we had a dress-up theme every day of the week. And then on Friday, our reading specialist, Brittany Herman, coordinated a guest reading day. So the teachers signed up for times throughout the day where other teachers or other staff members could come in and read a story to the students. So I know Mr. Rinton signed up to read. We had a lot of different guests popping up throughout the day. So we had some of our primary teachers read to our older students, our older teachers read to our younger students. Some classrooms had upwards of like five or six different guest readers throughout the day. So it was just something different and really a cool thing to do in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. We also, our childcare, Karen Bishop, our childcare director, she kind of spearheaded the creation of a T-shirt in collaboration with the Abilities Project. They are childcare T-shirts, and she sold them to staff and even to child care families. So we all wore those on March sixteenth, just to kind of show our support for that service that we do have for our families and our students. So that was definitely something that was fun. Last Monday, on the twentieth, we held our very first Spanish bilingual family reading night at the elementary school. So our Yale coordinator, Frances Sisario, in collaboration with Stephanie Robertson, Krista Dombeck, Connor Ross, Katie Strutz, they kind of team this together. Frances had a presentation for the families about how to foster reading and love reading and literacy at home. And there were a bunch of activities that the families did while they were here, such as games. Dave was in attendance as well, had a good time, made a pretty good turnout. So kudos to everybody involved in that. Third and fourth grade's spring concert was last Thursday, so on the twenty-third. The third graders, their theme was different countries, so all of their songs were from countries from around the world. And then the fourth graders had more of a USA theme, states and things like that. So our mascot made an appearance, and we also brought back the Algoma School song, which not many of us know, so that, that was something different as well. So it was a bright spot, so kudos to Megan Nemu who coordinated that for us. And then lastly, we will finally be wrapping up with the bulk of our state assessments for the district. We had our eleventh grade students who took the ACT on March seventh. Our seventh and eighth grade and tenth grade students took the forward exam last week. We have our elementary students starting this week with the forward exam. And then on Wednesday, the ninth and tenth graders are taking the pre-ACT. And then that should be it. So besides a few makeups that we'll have to do after spring break, we will be sitting pretty nicely. So a huge shout-out to Dave, who navigated this with me for the first time this year. He did a great job, just helping me coordinate and plan and just connect all the pieces, because there's a lot of new parts and a lot of things that have to kind of line up. So it was a very hopeful it's me this year, so thank you, Dave. That's all I got.
Questions for Katie?
I just have one comment, and it has nothing to do with what you just said.
Yeah.
One, I just wanted to let you know, one day last week, Mary Brightwell called me and said, these are short in the cafeteria down at the elementary school, can you help out for a couple hours? I said, oh, you know, sure. I did that up here when they had COVID a couple of times. I said, yeah, I'll be down there. Jean's got that cafeteria running so smooth, even like, even since they had a rookie like me on board. You know, it, it's still, it, she, everything went smooth, everybody knew what they were, what, what to do. I told Sean Duncan, I said, Sean, this is the only time I'm going to ever let you tell me what to do. And he was real good, but hey, can you, can you do this? Now you're going to have to go wipe the tables, you're going to have to do this. And he said, okay, Sean, I can do that. But it just ran so smooth, and she really does a, does a good job down there, so.
She does. I appreciate that. I will add her to that tag.
Yeah, it's important to give people positive feedback when they're doing a good job.
Yeah, and just the care that, just for all the students and the meals and the teachers who have the meals, like everything is very thoughtful, very, very thoughtful.
Yep. Nice to hear. Anything else before we move on? Okay, middle school, high school principal report, Dave.
Okay, we've just recently had a middle school Valentine Days themed dance, which was put on by our middle school teachers. It was very nice of them to do that. They took their own time and their own efforts to put that on for the kids. Understand it was a great hit, kids behaved really well. In fact, there was a lot of comments just how well the kids behaved and how they included each other in the dancing. There were no cliques and all that weirdness, so that was really good to hear. I'm going to skip B, I think Katie covered that one pretty well. So we don't need to talk about standardized testing anymore. Thank you, Katie. All right, and then the last thing I think I have on mine, a second from the last thing, is the Brown County Home Builders Association Middle School Design Challenge. This is something that Matt Abel does a wonderful job with, and our students do a wonderful job with. This year, if you didn't see it, they built a massive pergola with a little fire pit in the middle. And that will go to this competition, which will get voted on by judges, and also there's a people choice. What comes with that is materials and money to start with, and then if they win, there's additional awards and money that comes with it. And ultimately, those items are auctioned off and function in people's homes. I purchased a table from those kids a few years ago, it's still in my garage. It's a lovely piece, so if you want to see it, it's on the Wolf Tech Facebook page. It's also on the middle school, high school Facebook page. Yes, that is a shameless plug for my Facebook page. So there's a lot of things that go on there that will not ever make this recorded, because there's so much going on at school. I think the greatest thing about that project, though, with Matt Abel, is just all of the different thought and discipline that the kids have to use to be able to create those projects. There's teamwork, there's design, there's actual construction, there's deconstruction, there's reconstruction. There's just a lot of finance balancing the, the budget. All those things go into that project. It's a really great opportunity for kids to apply what they learn.
About how many kids are involved in that?
There is a picture again on the Wolf Tech Facebook page, and I, if I, and I don't have the exact number, I would say maybe there is ten to twelve that actually did the building. If you look at the picture, you can see all the, all the kids in there. I haven't looked at it in a hot minute, so I apologize. And then lastly, the Band and Choir New York trip is coming up, and that is also an incredible experience. As someone who has chaperoned it, been on it multiple years, Jen Massey does a phenomenal job in organizing that, and it takes a lot of time. This year, she is, she has designed the trip, is leading the trip. I don't believe that there's an actual travel company involved, it's just Jen drawing on her vast knowledge. And then, of course, all of the fundraising has to be planned, the music has to be planned. And between her and Emma, they've got this thing ready to go, the kids are excited, and I am excited to see what they learn and what their experience is like out there. So that's my report.
They are performing several different places out in New York and, and was it Ohio as well?
Um. Yes, I want to say it's, forget the city, but there's a specific city. Jen's actually, and this is something that she's also very good at, wherever she goes, she's always scouting. And so one of the things she's scouting for this year is to try to network with a sister school. And the, the point of that is to get the kids together and not only share towns, but share stories. What is it like to go to a school, a small rural school in that state compared to Algoma? So she is, she's got her feelers out always when she's traveling around.
Yeah, it's a wonderful experience for the students.
Dave, about how many kids are going on this trip?
So when they leave on Thursday, they'll leave a little early, because they're also playing at the Milwaukee Bucks game, the band is, not the choir.
Oh, nice.
They, they will leave, all told, the chaperones and students, and that also includes some middle school students going to that game. There will be a hundred and ninety kids departing from this town, headed out on that trip, so. That's a big, it's a big thing.
It's a big thing. Although, when, when I, just for the fun of it, counted up all the students' names on the Bandorama program.
Oh.
I think I got up to like two hundred and forty-three, and I thought, oh my gosh, how many more kids do we even have in the school between fifth grade and senior, you know?
Yeah, Jen and I one time did the, the stats, and I think we were at eighty-seven percent participation in the fine arts.
Are the, are the middle school kids going to New York tour, just to the Bucks game?
No, just to the Bucks game, then we'll, we'll drive them back here. And then the rest of the contingency will, will move on to New York City.
And they're there for like, the trip's like a five-day thing?
Yeah, I think with the bus, bus trip involving about five days, they'll get back on Wednesday night.
Yeah, yeah.
I know the band room is busting at the seams. The band room is busting at the seams.
Oh, in terms of how many kids are in it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's, that's always one to hear about and think about, so. Any other questions for Dave? All right, we'll keep going. Pathfinder AVA report.
Yes, I'm going to plug into, we had an AVA group that also did the Brown County Builders Home Association, and we had three girls who built theirs, so they're a very small team, but they did two chairs and a wooden trellis, which is very similar to the ones we have back in AVA, the girl, the tomato key vines. So they also put in. This is my new thing, since I've had my child, I drop everything except for him, so. I literally dropped everything, I don't know what's wrong with me.
It's nice to have you back.
Thanks. So, yes, the three girls worked very, 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 very hard, almost the whole school year on that, so it was pretty cool as well. AVA is piloting an online platform for the rest of the school year called Imagine Edgenuity. We have a group of, I think, ten or eleven students that are just going to try it out for the rest of the year to see if they like it or not. They're going to do more of the core content, but we do have a group of students that is piloting their SEL lessons as well. And Avery Robinson is kind of spearheading some of the social emotional learning classes, which have been really great already for some of our students. Our staff are stretched pretty thin in there with all the different classes they have to teach. So if it works out well, it could be really great for our staff to have a little bit of more freedom to work on the project side with the kids, and then the content side would kind of come from the Edgenuity stuff. The other cool part of Edgenuity is that we can take whatever we want, but tailor it to our own needs. So they have the content there, but if there's other content we want to create, we can create it and plug it in. If there's content we don't necessarily need, we can take it out, and then we can plug in our own project-based things into their platform as well. So like I said, they're going to pilot that for the rest of the year and kind of see the feedback that we get from the kids, if they like it. It could also be a big selling point for AVA, because one would have an online platform that kids could potentially do from home as virtual learning, so. So far, it's been pretty positive. They just started last week. And then Pathfinder, Lex has been taking them on a lot of excursions this semester, which has been great to get them onto the community. They have a partnership with Paul's Pantry, I think they've gone there three or four times this year already. Last month, it was a sugar-baking week, so they're baking sugar for everybody who uses it there. And it was a cool experience for one of our newer kids, because they have been on the other side of Paul's pantry, where they've been with their parents going to get food there when they were living in Green Bay. So it's cool for them to be able to give back and to something that they've used in the past. And then last week, they went to Dark County Candle Company, because we have a couple of kids who want to learn how to make candles, so they're able to kind of learn the trade and make some of their own candles while they were there. And then they're also doing a dance project with March Madness, I was down there today, and got a little heated, so we had two kids that are in the final, final four, but it's final two with them, and we'll see who comes out on top.
That's all I got.
Sounds good. Questions for Katie? Again, nice to have you back. All right, we will move on. Special Ed Wellness Report, Marie.
Sorry, no voice all the time. Oh, we have been trying to find some different opportunities for team bonding in, as our special ed staff, with having a lot of new teachers, new career professionals, just a way to kind of get to know each other since we, you know, really work very closely and need to trust each other and build that really positive relationship. Just some different creative ideas that Alotta Weber, who's one of our new special ed teacher, has come up with. She had our very own Clarissa Lewis, the middle school art, middle school, high school art teacher, put on a canvas painting for us. If you want to check out mine and Dave's office, because he liked his newest decor. But that was just a really fun opportunity to get together as a staff, we had a little potluck. We're also planning some other activities. One is going to be a trivia night at Homestead, is it the, with, with, trivia? And we also want to do a roleplay course together, so. Some exciting stuff to just kind of get to know each other as, as people, too, aside from just our job. Another really exciting update from the special ed world, we recently had a former community rep member reach out to us wanting to donate towards something in honor of his son with autism. We came up with a project in connection with our speech language, one of our speech language pathologists, Ashley Brown, is designing a communication board for our playground for our students that use AAC devices or alternative augmented communication devices. And it just gives them opportunities to have another way to communicate with their peers, to have their form, form of language accessible to their peers, and they can see that on the playground, so. Really, really exciting.
What's the timeline on that?
Well, we're still kind of designing it right now, so we're just kind of in the very middle stage. We'll keep you updated as.
Yeah, that is.
And last thing, as a wellness committee, we put on a staff step challenge in the months of February and March. We had a really great turnout, twenty-seven participants, twenty-seven staff members competing with how many steps they could take. Our two highest steppers, one of them being Dave Robertson, were able to get over five hundred thousand steps in four weeks. Pretty impressive. Just another way to keep us competitive and active. Just another way to keep us competitive and active.
Yeah.
It was really fun.
Excellent. Questions for Marie? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. We had two committees meet this month. Policy and Practice Committee meeting. We are continuing to plow through, and we are using MIC to every last drop that, of effort. So, we got through another sixty-three policies. The ones that had significant changes, you had in your packets. Um, there were some, let's see, a few that we did not copy because it was not worth, um, doing the paper. Um, the first one on that, which you did not get, fifty-two fifteen, um, missing and absent children, all they did was add some definitions of what a missing child and an absent child was, so there is no reason to change that. Um, on, um, care of students with chronic health conditions, five-three-three-five, we added, um, one of a new chronic health condition, neuromuscular disorder, to all of the other disorders that were listed, so it was just adding that one disorder. Then, five-five-two-oh, was simply taking out administrative guidelines, you know, that statement, because we don't have a book for that, so we just made it meet our situation. Um, five-five-four-oh, um, schools and governmental agencies, um, basically, the, we took out the SRO, um, aspect of it since we don't have that yet. We had anticipated that we were going to, so we had, so we didn't have, so that X is, is pending, but we'll, we'll have it as we, as we need it, so... And that was the same as five-seven-seven-one, surgeon seizure, just the school resource officer, um, change on that. Let me see. Um, five-eight-three-oh, student fundraising, we just removed the line talking about administrative guidelines, and five-eight-four-oh, student groups, we just revised it to a line with a policy that we already approved, twenty-four-thirty. So, um, those were the ones that did not include in your packet. Did anybody have any questions on the revised ones that were in your packet or than the All right, I'll put that nice big thing aside.
It'd be nice to have them, yeah, updated.
Yes, we are, and, and we are...
We'll do the same thing at CSUN.
We are having one more meeting before MIC is through, so that, since we're into the grind.
Whenever we have that meeting.
Yeah. So, she will, uh, yeah, so she will be doing one more series of probably around sixty before the April meeting, so we're gonna get a little bit more effort out of her. Um, we, so we scheduled that meeting for April sixth, and, um, we will be asking for approval of the policies in our action items. So, okay, no further questions on that? Then the other one was our Finance Committee meeting. Pat?
Finance Committee met on March seventeenth. I'm not gonna talk too much about the defeasance, because these two gentlemen explained it, so I'm not gonna elaborate on that. We talked about, um, the cost savings that would have an effect on, on the board, how much that was, um, so we are recommending approval of that. Um, we also talked about rate pay for student employees and, um, uh, the possible salary increases and what that would, how that would affect the budget, but we know decisions have been made, obviously, but we just kind of talked about it, so we got a, a feel for how that's gonna work. The health insurance is going up substantially, did you say about fifteen percent?
Uh, it's projected nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
We are hoping to get it down to twelve point eight, is what we heard this afternoon, so...
So, you know, the cost sheet was gonna work on, um, discussing those options and hopefully getting that, that down a little bit, um, and that's about it.
Any questions for Pat? And again, we'll be looking at the resolution, and the committee did recommend approving the defeasance. All right. Current COVID statistics?
Uh, zero students and one staff member, as of today.
All right.
Is the dashboard still on the website? Did we, I looked for it one day last week, and I, did I?
Because we've had such little action.
Wonderful, okay.
Isn't that a nice thing to be able to say? All right. These next items for discussion are probably gonna get into a bunch of things, so maybe at six-twenty-five now, we could have the recess and cut a little cake, take a five-minute break, um, and then we'll come back for our items of discussion. Discussion items, and the first one, um, is our convention update. From the convention that those of us who attended in January, um, we've had such busy agendas that, um, it keeps getting bumped, but, um, at some point, we, it's not fresh enough, so we're gonna go for it tonight, so... Anne, you had some things you wanted to share?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I thought our speakers were great. David Horsinger, I think that's how you pronounce it, he gave a talk on the eight pillars of trust, uh, including community, teachers, and students, and we, as a school board members, administration, and teachers, we need to be trusted, and there is so much division, nobody trusts anybody, and we have to get back to that. Then, uh, Sabrina Mayburn did ten positive communication phrases, and she said, words matter. How do you say what you mean and mean what you say in a nice way? You know, I haven't held a session in a nice way, and she's laughing. I went to quite a few sessions, and, and some that I really thought were helpful. One was successfully navigate book challenges. We have to have good procedures and policies. Parents have the right to choose what books their children should read, but they don't have the right to make choices for all of our students, and that's personally how I feel. I've, I have to give you a little, uh, personal account. My third daughter was on the bus coming home, and I think she probably was in middle school. And when she got off the bus, she had her books and everything, and she put them down on the table, and I noticed that one of them was a fiction book by Harold Roberts. Now, he was kind of racy. And I thought, ooh, I said, where did, where'd you get that? And she said, well, so-and-so on the bus had been reading it, but didn't dare take it home, and so gave it to me, and because he didn't think the mother, Carrie's mu, I gave her a name, Carrie's mother, would say anything. So, I thought, oh, gosh, I said, are you gonna read it? And she said, yeah, she told me it was good. Okay, all right, read it. Then when she got done with that, I, she said, Mom, I'd like to read another one. Ooh. Okay. So she did, and when she got done with that one, I said, what, what did you think? She said, oh, they're all the same, they're disgusting. And I know, I know, that, uh, you can't read that. That's the first thing she would have been reading. So that's just my personal thing.
And probably would have said she loved it.
Yeah, right. And she's a very big reader, now, all my girls are. Um, one was how facilities can bring students back to the trades. You and I sat together, and that one is where Kiwanis was for future, featured. And the thing I got out of that was design for what you don't know you mean. And I thought, no, that's a really good idea.
They also talked in that thing about, about, um, making the building aesthetically pleasing to the kids so they want to go in there.
Yes.
Like the tech ed labs, it doesn't have to be dreary and gray, and, you know, let's, let's make it very nice, yep.
Then, the one that I really moved me was students leading their schools against hate. There were seven students, I, you were in that one too, Pat, I think.
I think, I think so.
Um, four were in person and three were virtual. The students led the discussion, explaining what the organization was, and the name of the organization is, are, We Are Many, United Against Hate. And it's working in the school districts of Deerfield, Dodgeville, McFarland, and Holman. And there was a mother sitting across from me, and I know, because she said, can I ask a question? And, uh, one of the students, who happened to be black, uh, said, sure, and she said, is this working? And he looked at her and he said, well, I haven't heard the N-word in two weeks.
Oh, gosh.
And I'm, you know, like, oh. So, that was, I, I, it just hit me. And so, they gave out some things, Public Schools Unite Us, and PIMS, We Are Many, United Against Hate. But then...
One of those books, too.
Yeah. Then, you guys told us about this exhibit.
Wild.
Oh.
And you maybe want to talk about it a little bit. Did you get one in the books?
Oh, I have one in bookstore.
Yeah.
My, my biology teacher, Al Breitler, would have died for this.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, I know.
What, it's a skeleton in like a casket. It's all glass, and you can touch what you want to look at. And so, he was explaining all this, and I said, I had heart surgery. He said, oh, okay, pulled up the heart, and I said, they took the veins out of my leg. So he pulls the vein, puts it up there by the heart.
It's all, it's like a flat...
Yeah.
Table that is all computer...
It flips, you can see the back and the front and the side, and it was amazing.
If anyone wants to look at this, it's...
I was gonna give mine to Eric.
Eighty thousand dollars, but, if you, you know, if we had students that were interested in this...
Oh, my gosh, in terms of, like, any medical school, any nursing school has to get something like that.
And he also said there were animals that they could pull up, too.
Right, 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 'cause it's a computer...
But there aren't some that aren't as expensive, but they don't flip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, you know, if you're, if you're gonna get it, go big.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, it wasn't a real body in there, it was all, you know, um, computer. It was, but it was full size, um, yeah.
It was a size for a casket.
And you, and you could, you know, you, you, when you were manipulating things, you know, it was like you were working. It was amazing, I mean, just amazing in terms of being able to really see the different layers and not have to smell formaldehyde.
Yeah, oh, gosh, I barely remember formaldehyde at school.
Yeah, no, so, yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Is that your?
I am done.
Okay, Nick, did you have anything you want to talk about?
Um, yeah, there's a couple of things I want to give to the teachers that I thought might, they might find useful, but I did go to one on school safety, just to make sure that we're in line with what other districts are doing. I was hoping for more ideas on what they're doing, but they were more into the plans and making sure that it adheres to your policies and, you know, what your city does, and so, you know, we had gone through all that, but, um, in light of what happened down in Nashville today, um, I was watching the news station, and there was a retired FBI agent on there.
I watched, I was watching, too.
And he said simply, if you want to keep these people out of your schools, keep your doors locked. This person came in through a side door, just like down in Texas. Um, so it's, I guess it's so important for us, and really impressive to the kids and the staff, you can't put a towel in a door, you can't prop a door open, you know, because you just can't. I had a discussion with, not a discussion, a question, I was at the Fitness Center this morning, and there was two people that were just looking to join, they were outside, and I recognized them, and there was a gentleman across from me, I was putting my shoes back on, and, and he said, you know, you, you can't even come in here, they want to join, and they, they can't get in. And I said, well, they have to go around the, I said, 'cause this is always locked. I said, they have to go around. I said, he said, well, why? I said, well, because anybody could come in through this, I said, and blow us all away. Um, so I said, it's a security measure, I said, it's, it's the nature of the beast now, there's nothing we can do about it. So, lo and behold, what happens down in Tennessee. So, um, again, I can't stress enough to make sure that the doors are locked, the side doors, the, you know, those, those, not the major entrances, they're always locked, but those minor entrances on the sides, make sure that those aren't propped open, the kids aren't propping them open, and, you know, I, ever since I've been on the board, I think we've been talking about propping doors open, um, but it's really starting to get really...
Real.
Real, real, real.
That same, um, gentleman talked about, um, organization, maybe your local police department, or talk of, they, we can do a security threat assessment for you, go through your building and see where your weaknesses are. We've, we've, we've done it, so we're always ahead of the game, um, so, yeah.
And we are doing the digital mapping now, right? That is something that's happening, which will be very, very good, so that any fire or law enforcement or whatever would have detailed access to...
I mean, that's not, it's not far from where my daughter lives, and she said, that's a very, um, affluent neighborhood where, where that happened, you know, it's not like, you know, so it just tells you, it, it can happen anywhere, it doesn't make any difference what your community looks like, it can happen anywhere.
The rest of my time was spent in the delegate assembly.
Maybe you should tell what that is.
I want to, Anne touched on the ones that I went to, I went to a few of them on finances, and, boy, there's nothing more boring than school finance, um, but we, 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 you know, you, you can, you can learn things, and, you know, Madison is a, is a, can be very frustrating at times, is what basically you take out of that, but when you go to these things, and I, I did hit some other ones, it's always, it's always, um, good to hear these things because I, oh, well, we've been doing that for years, or you, okay, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we've, we've done that, we've, we've got that done already, so that's always, you, and we've all experienced that, you know, so, and they show that we're on the right path and that we're headed in the right direction.
And even though all of us have been on the board a long time, and unfortunately, Chris, you weren't able to join us this, um, year, um, hopefully in future years you can, 'cause it is so much information, but even for those of us who have been going for years and years and years, there's always stuff that we can get out of it, and so it's always worth going.
And it's the networking.
Yes.
I mean, I've heard some pretty nasty horror stories from just districts where board members were working in the offices and, yeah, so it's, it's networking.
So, I am going to be a little braver on the delegate assembly stuff.
I thought you could handle that.
Um, when you are, when you are a delegate, and the reason that two of us from our board go is because there's one delegate for representing Algoma, and then MIC was there representing CSU seven. So, um, that is why we happen to have two off of this table that were both at the delegate assembly. So, every district, um, has a delegate at this assembly, and basically, the gathering of the hundreds of people is there to vote on resolutions that the different districts have put forward, to give, to give a consensus idea of what our association, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, should be trying to promote with the legislature. So that's really what it is. It's not creating law, it's not creating policy, it's, it's voting on the different resolutions from the different, um, well, the new resolutions, 'cause there's a whole book of ones that are passed, that are in the past, but all the new ones. So we get a bunch of new ones, and sometimes the, um, the sessions can last a long time, and, um... And, um, and this was one of those where it was shaping up to be a marathon event. And, but what was very, very disappointing is that it actually had to be called before all the business was done because we no longer had a quorum. That has never happened.
Not in my twenty-one years.
I don't think it ever happened in the history, and that's a really sad thing to say, because when you're, yeah, it's not fun to be there for hours and hours, it starts at like one, and I think we finally, it, when it wasn't even over, it was five thirty or after, I mean, you're there a long time, and you're, and there's lots of different, art, you know, discussion on different things, and then amendments, and this and that and the other, and it goes on and on and on. And you do get tired, but, you know, it's like, you don't leave before the business is done. I just, I, I was feeling sort of ashamed of the body that...
Well, you know, I'm old school, so if I commit to something, I'm going to commit.
Well, alright.
If I had to bring a sleeping bag, okay, fine, but I'm gonna, you know, I want to get it finished, I committed to this, you know?
Well, and you're, and your board has, you know, you're representing your school district and your board. So it isn't an individual, oh, I'm not liking this class, I'm going to leave, you know, or this is, you know, it's like, you're there for a reason. So I was, I was sort of upset about that.
But, you know, I talked to a couple of the D W S B members, and we had a lot of new board members this year. I mean, this, that were elected last April when Chris was, so there were a lot of new people to the delegate assembly. And I think, um, a lot of these districts thought that we were really actually writing law. Um, so, I mean, there were amendments to the amendments and back to the original amendments, and then changing the amendment again. And it, we're just giving them guidelines, you know, we're just giving them guidelines. And I think too many of them thought that we were enacting law here.
Yeah, so it, the discussions got down to like a word or two on different things, which is why things were going so long. And I think you're right, I think there was some misunderstanding of what...
Yeah.
So hopefully that won't happen again. But there were, yeah.
Did they have a professional facilitator there, or were they using their own people?
They had...
Well, they've got attorneys, you know...
They had attorneys, they had the course, the whole board, and the, and it was run with, it's very, it's run with very strict parliamentary procedures.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at, your facilitator can move a meeting along or slow it down.
Yeah.
If, if maybe a letter, letter to the school board association expressing your displeasure and the length and time of it, they'd do something about it.
Yeah, I, it's not a bad idea. I mean, and there are people, there were people who would try and finally call the question and things like that, to try and get things moving. But, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
I actually will mention that to, to two people on the S C seven board that are on the W S B.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So I'll just go through a couple of the things that we had sort of talked about going into it that were of interest for our district. And the first one is the private school transportation change. Instead of, um, per pupil reimbursement to a family, it, make it per household so that when it's one car, we're not paying three different times. So that did pass. Providing teaching license applicants with an alternative pathway that doesn't require the fourth, the foundations of reading test, um, which has been a big snake for a lot of people. That, it also passed in terms of promoting that. And one that did not pass, that we had talked about, was universal free lunch. That did not pass. There were a lot of other resolutions, but these were sort of the ones that we had sort of talked about. And then, um, a really cool session that I went to was called Renewing Our Schools, Engaging Students in Energy Conference Conservation. And it was basically put on also by students as well as the Richmond School District. But the Richmond School District was talking about conservation, importance of clean, you know, air quality, ventilation, water quality. They had had, um, with Johnson Controls, some things had been put in, and, and then they were monitoring, which all sounded really cool, and I'm sort of anxious to talk to McKinstry and our, with our facilities to just sort of talk about, hmm, because they were talking about all the different energy conservation things that they were able to change and save the district so much money. I mean, we've done some things here already with our lighting and with, you know, our heating and that kind of thing, and our solar. But the other thing with the kids is there is a renew our schools, um, get smart about energy use, focus on energy competition, that this Oconomowoc, um, they, I think some of their students, it was four students, I think in a science class that, that did it. And then they've sort of made it a thing that every year now, a different group is doing it. But, um, but you, there's a little bit of upfront cost to focus on energy to get involved, because I think they give you some equipment and that kind of thing, but then you get that money back through Focus on Energy. So there's not really a cost with it. And, and they earn, they earn points by all their different ideas of what they have done in terms of projects and activities, in terms of, they, the equipment that they're given helps them monitor different aspects of the school use. And then, and then they come up with, with different things that they can do throughout the school. And, yeah, and Oconomowoc, um, the students that were there were, um, they had won, I think, the first prize on it. But every year Focus on Energy does this, I think, twice a year. And I thought, hmm, this might be something that would be interesting to, to do through the charter school or a science class or whatever. So I have information I can give whoever wants it on that. Yeah, so it's a competition where energy-related activities and lessons are initiated by the students. And it's through, it's with Focus on Energy and Wisconsin KEEP, which is apparently Wisconsin K through twelve Energy Education Program. The other thing that I thought was really interesting was a thing on in terms of tobacco use and drug addiction and, um, all the different vaping. I mean, there is so much stuff that's way beyond me that I don't even know what's out there anymore. But there were a couple of different twists on, I, I've, I have some really cool information and pictures and everything of all the stuff that's out there now, which I can also share. But, um, but there's also a lot of cessation programs that are available through the state that are available, not on tobacco, live vape free, not for me, Wisconsin Tobacco Quit Line, that are all, there's different, some of it's online, some of it's texting, some of it's whatever. But, um, so there's some good information with that. And then the last thing that was sort of interesting was the idea of the statistics in terms of when schools have really strict policies about something like vaping or smoking or whatever, to the point where kids are automatically put on some kind of suspension or expulsion track or whatever, that, um, that it has all these ramifications down the line. And, and the suggestion being that, um, that the policies of the schools look at those kinds of things that aren't a danger to anybody else, but look at it differently and have the, um, consequences or whatever be more of, you know, taking one of these programs or, you know, a different thing versus, versus the punitive approach, which I thought was pretty interesting, too. So I have information on that. I went to a confidential, confidentiality and privacy in the business office, and it was, it was interesting. I had some good information, but it was about as exciting as the finance ones. And then, um, I think Jessie, you and I were both at the onboarding new school board members. Got some good information there. And then, um, one of the things that, you know, you can get a lot of really cool ideas, like that body, and, you know, with the, the different vendors, you know, the different things that are set up. And I spent a lot of time at this one booth talking with the people, it's called Candor, and they're health education. And I talked to Jessie a little bit about this. What, what I really was fascinated or interested about the concept of doing health education, not just online or whatever, but they get into all of the normal health education at the different grade levels, you know, so covering some of those tricky issues like puberty and that kind of thing. As well as they have modules for high school, which gets a little bit more into, um, disease prevention and alcohol and drug, you know, prevention and that kind of thing. So, I mean, it's a whole spectrum. But what I really thought was interesting about it is it's a virtual program. So there's a lot, you know, it's, I think a lot of it is done in like sort of storytelling animation, but it's a, there's a real person, it's done with a real person on the other end. So the class is being given. The students that are attending it, watching it, can ask questions, but they don't, they are able to ask questions privately. You know, so the questions go to the instructors, but they don't have to feel, you know, embarrassed about asking it because they're not having to ask it in front of their peers. And, you know, that right there, I thought, that is really a, a pretty neat idea. Because then the question is asked, and, you know, and the instructor is working into some of the content. But then everybody, you know, that might have those same awkward questions can get the answers. The other thing I really liked about it is the idea that it would be very standard information. It would be, everybody's getting the same thing, you know, it's not, you know. And there's also, there's, um, modules where parents can go in and see, you know, online what the kids are going to, you know, what it all involves, so, um, and if they have any concerns, you know, kids can be opted out, just like they can now. But anyway, um, I just thought it was a neat concept, um, and, I don't know, maybe we could try that on a small scale with one, you know, one topic or something and see. But again, I think there is so much misinformation and controversy and everything about all of that. Again, I thought having something very consistent so that it's not one of our teachers always, you know, having to be, or our nurse or whatever involved, it would be a step away. It would always be the exact same content being given. Parents would have access to seeing it, I just thought, hmm, that might be something we could look into. And then the bus stuff, the, the cool stuff that's available for buses, since we're in that business now, in terms of being able to check kids in on, you know, and have cameras and all that for safety. That was another thing, but, all right. So, it was a good conference, as always. So we'll give you guys the stuff that could be helpful to you guys. And moving on to another big topic, purchase of Wings of Eagles ministries, childcare. I'll let you talk about that.
Sounds good. So, um, on the agenda tonight as an action item is approval for the purchase of Wings of Eagles childcare is up for sale. And we have been having discussions with Reverend Taylor and the board, and on the community as well. We talked about this at the February board meeting, about moving in this direction. And so, really want to highlight the four reasons why this is so important to do. One, it, childcare is such a need across all communities, but really impacts Algoma hard. This is the only childcare center that is in the city, other than private in-home childcare. So if this were to close, it would have a devastating impact on our community. And so, that's some reason number one. Number two, I think having a strong child development, education at a young age for our students is really critical. And so the earlier we can get in front of our students that are going to be coming up and moving up once they hit the school age, the better they're going to be in school, they're going to be more successful, so. Number two, it helps retain our staff members. We have our own staff members that have their own kids that struggle to find childcare for them, whether it's before school, after school, or if they're real young during the school day. And so, we have seen countless times the reasons for staff members leaving our district is because of childcare. And so this will help hopefully retain some staff members. And the last reason, number four, is to help increase our open enrollment across the district. So Algoma is not alone in need for childcare. We have Sturgeon Bay, all the way down to Kiwanis, a need for childcare. So by hopefully getting these kids in at a young age into childcare, they will stay with the school district and continue on. They'll develop friendships with students, relationships with staff members. And so they're going to continue to progress and be open enrolled into our district, so. Some things that have taken place up to this point, and all of this is done, obviously, before the board approval to go through this. So all of this is, can just stop if the approval does not pass. But we have done a building inspection for the building with a licensed state inspector. It has passed, it is in compliance with all of the state regulations for childcare. It is regulated to have up to forty-five children in it, based off the square footage. We have looked at a policy manual, Katie Horn has done a terrific job on working on that. And we'll be assuming the role of director if, for, the resolution does pass in the action item. Um, so she will be the leader of the childcare center. We have met with staff members that are already at the childcare center and discussed with them what they envisioned some changes looking like for the childcare center. We heard countless times, they just want some more updated new toys. Well, that's an easy fix, right? We can easily do that, so. The facility itself will need a little bit of T L C, just some paint, possibly looking at doing some new flooring at some point. So, um, cosmetically, those are all easy fixes that we can do within our own staff member, facility staff, so. With the purchase, it comes the land, um, the building, and all the assets that go with it. So appliances, playground equipment, cribs, um, cots, any large item, ticket items. And so I believe the sale price, which is listed at two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, is well worth the price because of all the assets that would come along with it. So if we were to look at opening a childcare center, we would have to find a location, we'd have to buy all of the equipment that would go with it. So the state inspector even asked, you know, what is the sale price, what are they looking at selling it? Um, and they said that is a very fair, fair price, so. Wings of Eagles right now is being run as a nonprofit, five oh one C three, so we would be acquiring that. Included in your board packet is the resolution that our legal counsel has drafted up for this purchase. So if, for, this would pass tonight, we would move forward and begin next steps on planning. Our target date, if this were to pass, would be to take over on May first.
What did you say the cost was again?
Two hundred ninety-seven thousand.
Our, our staff, our staff is aging. I mean, we're gonna, in a few, couple of years, we're gonna have quite a few positions that are going to retire. And we're gonna have to fill those, and, and if we have a childcare, that might be an incentive to attract, attract new staff members. How much land is with that, Jessie?
It's just over an acre, I believe.
You said it could accommodate forty-five kids, how many, what's their census right now?
Right now, they have forty-two.
I don't...
And there's a waiting list, because it, you can only have so many students in a clo, a room based off of their age and the ratio of staff and square footage. So in the last week, I've been handed three families that are looking to apply that would like to be added. And Reverend Taylor is not adding any new families at this point because he knows he's selling, so.
And I think not all of those current slots are full-time.
Correct, some are school age.
So there is, there's a little more room in terms of new people coming in, was my understanding. Other questions or discussion?
Kind of an endeavor, but we've never backed away from being progressive and innovative in our way of thinking, so basically look at what the community needs are.
There are other school districts around the state that have childcare centers that go down to, we'd be licensed from six weeks old all the way through school age, so twelve, that would be able to be at this facility. We would maintain our current childcare at the elementary school, which ranges from ages three on up to age twelve. And so, at this point, they would be running a separate entity.
Did those other districts, did, I mean, how's it, I mean, obviously, it's going well for them? I mean, they haven't had any, that they could share with you?
The one thing I hear is just staffing, trying to maintain.
Well, that's what.
But that's, that's with our own, just education, right?
Right.
For children, so.
Are they fully staffed there now?
They are, yes.
And these employees would now be getting benefits?
They would become district employees, considered district employees, so they would be part of the Wisconsin retirement system and then would be eligible for any benefits that we offer our staff for.
Which could be an incentive, so. So, with all that, all that said, can we still make that affordable for families to cover our costs?
Yes, so, been working very closely with Baird on just running pure numbers. We don't see a need for, right now, to increase the cost per hour. There are a few things that are in place that we will have to look at closely, like the own staff do not have to pay for childcare, because the children will go for free. Well, there's a couple of staff that have two, three kids, so.
Is that fair to get?
We have to look at, yeah, we have to look at fairness across, you know, because they're now become district employees. We have to make sure that all of our staff are being treated equally, so.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some growing pains.
Yes, it's, it's going to be one day at a time. It's, we're not doing this for a profit. We are doing this for a need for our community, a service, and for the betterment of our children that are part of this community, so. Terms of where this money is coming from, because that's probably a question that community is wondering, we are planning to use our fund balance, so the carryover that has accrued. And so, right now, we are at a fund balance above forty-five percent, so this will be taken out of that. And then, as we begin operational, we're going to move this into our community foundation, which is that fund eighty, where we can then take it out of that. And that's pretty common across other districts that are, have childcare centers.
Okay. Are we satisfied with the discussion? Okay, then we will move on to that summer school, twenty-twenty-three.
All right, I'm going to turn this one over to Katie, so, how about summer school?
Real quick update, because I know summer will be here before we know it. We're in the very initial stages of planning for summer school for summer twenty-twenty-three. Lindsay Harmon is our summer school coordinator, once again. We have sent out an interest survey. She sent that out quite a while ago, just to our teachers, to our staff, just to gauge initial interest in teaching both summer school at elementary and then also the jumpstart that we run separately in July. So, we just have to compile some of that information. We're going to kind of hit the ground running with that after spring break. But right now, we're looking at June fifth through the twenty-third for our main summer school window at the elementary school. Jumpstart is usually in July. We have not nailed down any dates for that just yet. And if you remember from last year, I think you did a really great job of kind of bringing in different classes that kind of span throughout the entire summer, too, whether they were week-long or like every Monday, Wednesday. I know there was the strength and conditioning class at the wellness center, leadership to adventure is always included in that. So, we're going to, we kind of have to piece all of those parts together to, but we plan to do something similar this year as well. So, more information will be coming out after spring break on all of that, so.
So, you'll see this as an action item later down. We just need to approve that we are going to have a summer school program. We don't know the specific dates yet on everything, but just approving that we are having the program.
Any further discussion? Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four teacher contract revisions.
So, including your packet, me being new to the district, I sought out our legal counsel advice for our district to take a look at our existing teacher contract. And Bob Butler from WASB was the one that took a look at it. He works very closely with districts across the state on just this type of thing. And so, he took a, read through what our existing contract was, made some recommendations and changes that you're going to see highlighted in the yellow. The biggest change, I think, that we, you're going to see is that very first paragraph, under state statute law, any employer, public or private sector, needs to pay their employees within the first thirty-one days of doing the work. So, currently, we have a twenty-four equal installment opportunity for our staffs, meaning they get paid throughout the summer, but really, they're not working over the summer. And so, we need to give them an option of either doing the nineteen payments, which would be being paid throughout the school year, or to maintain the twenty-four payments that we currently have right now. So, attached to the contract that the teachers are going to receive is going to be a second page where they get to check whether they want to be nineteen or twenty-four payments, so. The other things that are highlighted throughout this are very minor, just referring to basically the employee handbook at times. And then, the board has the discretion to make changes to the employee handbook instead of going back and making revisions to the actual contract at times. Teacher contracts go out by May fifteenth, are required to go out, and are back at the ju, by June fifteenth.
All right, any questions about that? Pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, updated job description.
Yes, so, the next couple of months, we'll be bringing forwards job descriptions here. The two that I have tonight would be our school social work position that we approved last week, or last month, I'm sorry. And then, an updated job description to the director of special education and people's services. So, I'll start with that one. What we did with this one was, this is in relation to Marie Ock's position, we added the people's services piece to it. It's a very small, minor change, but it really encompasses much of the work that she's already doing. So, by having the people's services, Marie is then able to take the lead on many of our student services pieces, so our school psych, school social worker, school nurse, all the work that she does around the wellness center, that all falls under people's services, whereas formerly, she was just overseeing special education, so. So, the updated job description has her current responsibilities. She was instrumental in trying to get this all upgraded. She worked many, many nights on trying to incorporate everything that she does throughout the day and throughout the school year, so.
You are a busy woman.
All right, and the second job description having your packet is the school social work job description. And like I said, this was passed last month, that we looked at adding this position for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Qualifications for a school social worker is to have a master's degree in social work. You also need a DPI license, so just like a teacher would need a license, a school social work needs a license through DPI to be certified. This position is really going to be working closely with our building principals, our student services staff, such as our counselors, school psych, school nurse, and as well as our families, to make sure that our, our students' needs are being met. Big focus is going to be looking at attendance across our district and making sure that our kids are getting to school on time and that they have everything that they need throughout the day here at school.
Who's doing that now? Who's doing all that for now?
Who's doing that now?
Yes, who's doing that now?
Anyone and all, really. It really is. A lot falls on our principals here. A lot falls on our school counselors. A lot falls on Amanda Beargan, who has been wonderful in the position that she has. She's not a licensed social worker, so she can only do so much and have so many connections with people out in the community or the county or the state, so this is going to be a very important position for our district, and they're going to be kept busy, that's for sure.
So, it'll be posted?
Yes, so, once this gets approved tonight in the action items, we will post the position.
Questions? All right, moving on to action item. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, policy and practice committee meeting minutes of March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and the finance committee meeting minutes of March sixteen, twenty-twenty-three.
So, move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
So, move, and president?
Motion made by Dave. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the board of canvassers for the April fourth, twenty-twenty-three election. When we have a motion and a second, we'll have discussion.
So, move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have motion by Jennifer, second by Dave. Mick, have you figured the slate of canvassers? It's your, as a clerk, decision.
Well, I know we had talked about having Chris, but I think you guys are going to be gone.
I'm going to be at a time, yes.
I'm going to take.
So. So, you and Allison.
Last time it was Allison, myself, and.
I hope.
It was me last year.
Okay.
It was me last year.
Okay. You, you have a little bit of a conflict for that week this, this year.
Well, I mean, speak of Easter, so I'm happy to help if you can do it Monday, Tuesday, after Easter, instead of Monday, Thursday, or Friday.
That's, yeah, that's like pushing it to the very end of the limit.
Are we talking?
It needs to be done by the Tuesday.
Well, the election is going on the fourth.
We were looking at Thursday.
I'm talking like the tenth or the eleventh after?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Now, you know, I got said that it had to be done by the eleventh. And so, if we could do it Monday or Tuesday, that would be better for me, but.
I mean, it works for me. I, I don't have anything pressing. So, I can check with Allison. It's a, you have a day, I mean, I mean, a time that you're morning? Okay, I'll check with Allison, I'll get back to you.
All right.
And I, I can do it because I'm not running. If I was running, I could not be a canvasser, so.
Yes. All right, so we have Mick and Allison and Jennifer. And we have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
No, we do have a motion and a second.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four CISA eight service proposal in the amount of seventeen-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-three dollars and twenty cents.
So, move.
Need by Dave. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mick. Questions or discussion?
Does CISA seven not have a person in that position? Is that why we're going to eight?
These are for the speech there.
This is for deaf and hard of hearing services.
Deaf and hard of hearing.
So, it's very difficult, it's a very hard position to fill. I believe CISA seven does have it, but they're probably, their caselos are probably full. They don't have the capacity to add.
They would be our first choice.
So, how, how do we get those services? Is it?
Good question. So, it's, nope, they are in person, actually. It's, it's all driven by student IEPs. So, you know, if a student qualifies for their services under the IEP, then there's minutes written into their IEP upon any direct instruction. And a teacher either pushes into the classroom or pulls a student out and works specifically on academics related to their current loss.
Do you know how many students we currently have that have qualified or?
Um, three right now, and one is graduating, so that's why the cost is going down for next year. There'll be some cohorts, too.
I mean, CISA seven's got a little gentleman that was headed up, passed away this past summer, and so it's been a little bit of a struggle.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve having summer school in twenty-twenty-three.
I'll move.
Motion made by Chris, second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve first agency insurance for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school day coverage.
So, move.
By Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mick. Questions or discussion on that?
So, this is just for the school, you're right. If they, if the parents want to purchase something for sports, they have to purchase that on their own, right? Correct. Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. I need a motion to approve the Northeast Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship Service Agreement.
I still move.
Made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pat. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the defeatsance of a portion of the school district of Algoma, two-million-nine-hundred-fifteen-thousand general obligation refunding bonds. I'll need, this will need to be a roll call vote, but I think I also have to read the resolution, don't I?
Unfortunately, I believe you do.
I believe I do. So, I have copy. And thankfully, I don't have to do all the exhibits, but. All right, here we go. Where is the school district of Algoma, Kewanee County, Wisconsin? The district has sufficient funds on hand to deface the remaining outstanding portion of the twenty-thirty-one maturity, all of the twenty-twenty-eight through twenty-thirty maturities, and a portion of the twenty-twenty-seven maturity, the defeased bonds, of the district's two-million-nine-hundred-fifteen-thousand general obligation refunding bonds dated July eighteen, twenty-sixteen. Assuming the defeased bonds are called for prior redemption on April first, twenty-twenty-four, herein after the defeatsance of defeased bonds shall be referred to as the defeasance. Whereas the school board deems it necessary, desirable, and in the best interest of the district to proceed with the defeasance, now therefore be it resolved by the school board of the district that section one authorization of the defeasance, for the purpose of paying the cost of the defeasance, the district hereby appropriates the sum of one-million-one-hundred-seven-thousand-ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents, or such sum as is sufficient, from fund thirty funds on hand, the defeasance funds, which shall be used to fund the escrow account created below. Section two, escrow agent, escrow agreement, escrow account. Associated Trust Company, National Association, Green Bay, Wisconsin, is hereby appointed escrow agent for the district for the purpose of ensuring the payment of the principal of an interest on the defeased bonds. The district president and district clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an escrow agreement substantially in the form attached here, too, as exhibit A, the escrow agreement. Such form may be modified by said officers prior to execution, the execution of such agreement by said officers to constitute full approval of any such modification. the execution of such agreement by said officers to constitute full approval of any such modifications with the escrow agent for the purpose of affecting the provisions of this resolution. The defeasance funds shall be deposited in a defeasance escrow account, which is hereby created with the escrow agent pursuant to the escrow agreement for the purpose of retaining the required amount of cash, if any, and acquiring the United States obligations provided for in the escrow agreement. Upon transfer of the defeasance funds to the escrow account, the taxes heretofore levied and not in the process of collection to pay debt service on the defaced bonds shall be abated to the extent such transfer together with investment earnings thereon is sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the defaced bonds. But such abatement shall not affect the district's pledge of its full faith, credit, and resources to make such payments. The defeasance escrow account created by the escrow agreement shall herein after serve as the debt service or sinking fund for the defaced bonds. The escrow agent shall serve as custodian of said debt service or sinking funds. Section three, redemption of the defaced bonds. The district hereby calls two hundred thousand of the twenty thirty-one maturity, all of the twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty maturities, and twenty-five thousand of the twenty twenty-seven maturity of the twenty sixteen bonds for redemption on April first, twenty twenty-four, all as provided in the escrow agreement. The district hereby directs the escrow agent appointed above to cause a notice of redemption for said portion of the defaced bonds to be given as provided in the escrow agreement. Section four, conflicting resolutions, severability, effective date. All prior resolutions, rules, or other actions of the district or any parts thereof in conflict, conflict with the provisions hereof shall be and the same are hereby rescinded insofar as they may so conflict. In the event that any one or more provisions hereof shall for any reason be held to be illegal or invalid, such illegality or invalidity shall not affect any other provisions hereof. The foregoing shall take effect immediately upon adoption and approval in the manner provided by law, adopted and recorded this twenty-seventh day of March, twenty twenty-three. And it will be signed by me and attested by the clerk. So I need a motion.
I so move.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Jennifer? Dave? Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes. All right, that one.
Good reading.
Thank you. I must have had good teachers. All right, where are we? Ah, approving the revised teacher contract template for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year with the salary payroll option form.
So move.
Made by Pat, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mick. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think this is gonna be another one I have to read. Um, I'm going to approve the resolution authorizing the district administration to finalize purchase of assets and real estate from the Wings of Eagles Ministries Incorporated for purchase price not to exceed two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars and to execute documents memorializing such purchase.
I so move.
All right, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, I think I have to read that one too. I think it's shorter, though. Let's see, where do I have it? Resolutions of the Board of Education of the Algoma School District. Whereas the Algoma School District, the district, has entered into negotiations with Wings of Eagles Ministries Incorporated, the seller, for the purchase of real estate located at fifteen oh five Flora Avenue, Algoma, Wisconsin, the real estate and other assets related to the operation of a childcare center collectively with the real estate, the assets. And whereas the district and the seller have agreed to a total purchase price of the assets of two hundred ninety-seven thousand and zero one hundred dollars, whereas upon approval of the condition of title of the real estate by the district in consultation with its legal counsel and upon preparation and finalization of an asset purchase agreement, the district will be ready to close the purchase of the assets. Now therefore be it resolved that the district shall purchase the assets upon approval of the condition of title to real estate and upon approval of an asset purchase agreement as dem- as determined by Jesse Brinkman, the superintendent of the district, in consultation with Ammonson Davis LLC, legal counsel for the district. Now be it further resolved that superintendent of the district hereby is authorized to execute and deliver to the seller, enter into any final negotiations with the seller that do not include an increase in the purchase price of the assets, and execute and deliver such documents and take such actions as he may deem necessary and appropriate and in the best interest of the district to close the purchase of the assets and to secure the benefits of the purchase. His execution of same to be conclusive evidence he deemed any such documents and such actions to be necessary, reasonable, and appropriate. Now be it further resolved that any actions taken by the superintendent of the district before the adoption of these resolutions that would have been authorized but for the fact these resolutions had not yet been adopted are hereby ratified and approved. Now be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions may be delivered to a title company, the seller, and any other persons who have an interest in the closing of the purchase of the assets. Now be it further resolved that the clerk of the district's board of education is hereby authorized to execute and deliver to a title company, the seller, and any other persons who have an interest in the closing of the purchase of the property, a certification as to the accuracy and completeness of these resolutions. And then it's just the certification by you. All right, we have a motion and a second, this will also be a roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the director of special education and people services job description.
I so move.
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I need a motion to approve the school social worker job description.
I'll move.
By Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new Neola policies, fifty-two hundred, fifty-two fifteen, fifty-three ten oh one, fifty-three thirty, fifty-three thirty-five, fifty-three forty, fifty-four ten, fifty-four sixty-one, fifty-five hundred, fifty-five twelve, fifty-five thirteen, fifty-five seventeen, fifty-five seventeen oh one, fifty-five twenty, fifty-five forty, fifty-six ten, fifty-seven ten, fifty-seven seventy-one, fifty-seven seventy-two, fifty-eight thirty, fifty-eight forty, fifty-eight ninety-five.
So move.
Made by Mick, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Neola policies with no changes. Fifty-two hundred oh one, fifty-two twenty-three, fifty-two thirty, fifty-three ten, fifty-three twenty, fifty-three forty-one, fifty-three fifty, fifty-four twenty, fifty-four twenty-one, fifty-four thirty, fifty-four fifty-one, fifty-four fifty-one oh one, fifty-four fifty-one oh two, fifty-four sixty, fifty-four sixty oh one, fifty-four sixty-three, fifty-four sixty-four, fifty-five eleven, fifty-five fifteen, fifty-five sixteen, fifty-five thirty, fifty-five thirty-one, fifty-five forty point zero one, fifty-five, fifty-six oh five, fifty-six ten oh two, fifty-six eleven, fifty-six thirty, fifty-six thirty oh one, fifty-seven twenty, fifty-seven thirty, fifty-seven fifty-one, fifty-seven eighty, fifty-eight twenty, fifty-eight fifty, fifty-eight fifty-five, fifty-eight sixty, fifty-eight seventy, and fifty-eight eighty.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No changes in our COVID. Request for future agenda items. Anything. Next month, of course, we are reorganizing, so. Okay, then I.
FFA would like to have a field trip and look at her. What do you call it?
Pedronics.
Pedronics. sooner, better than later.
Already got a date, so I don't.
Ah, oh, okay, good. A date set?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Um, is it gonna be before our next meeting?
Yes.
Well, then maybe we can hear.
Yes, I believe so.
And we can hear about it. All right, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five subsections one CEFNI for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing, resignations.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mick. Roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Ann? I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Jennifer? Dave?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries.